Good afternoon. It is June 26, 2023. This is On Sound City Council. It's 5:30. We are calling the council meeting to order. Are there any additional items? Go ahead, Councilor Martin.
Through your worship, I have two items to bring forward. One is about National Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the other is about the Pride Parade.
I have the plaque ceremony that I attended at Billy Bishop and Wine Wednesday at the Tom Art Gallery.
I was also going to speak about the Pride Parade, but if Carol covers it all, then I'll pass that at the time.
Thank you. And I have five things that I'd like to speak to, ranging from events in the city to events that I've attended to announcements over the last week. Next, we go to number three, declarations of interest. I'm seeing none from anyone else. I have one to declare. The item number CS23076 being ZBA number 48 on our agenda is listed as 10A in Bylaw 2023-082. I declare disqualifying interest in the agenda item noted above. According with Part 1 of the Code of Conduct, avoidance of conflicts of interest, I act as a solicitor for a person or corporation with an interest in the lands abutting, the lands being dealt with in that report, which decisions council makes may affect my clients. So that's an interest. Got that? Councilor Dodd, I believe, has the motions. So motions for the closed session on May 29th, closed session of the special council, June 2nd, and regular council, June 12th.
Thank you, worship. Moved by myself, second by Councilor Farmer, that the minutes of the following meetings be adopted as printed. Closed session of the regular council meeting held on May 29th, 2023. Closed session of the special council meeting held on June 2nd, 2023. And finally, the regular council meeting held on June 12th, 2023.
And I wonder if that could, if the regular council meeting minutes of June 12th, 2023, could just be amended. Motion resulting from report 230612-008, respecting the 2023 fees and charges review. I spoke to the clerk, and it should have the inclusion of "in 2024" at the end of that motion, just to put a date on it.
So that's just a simple correction. You're good with that? Good. Thank you. So then I'm back to calling the question. All in favor? And that is carried. Number five, motion to move council into committee of the whole.
Thank you, worship. Moved by myself, second by Councilor Farmer, that the city council now move into committee of the whole to consider public meetings, deputations, and presentations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports of city staff, consent agenda, committee minutes, matters postponed, motions for which notice was previously given, and additional business.
And all in favor. And that is carried. At number six, we have no public meetings. At number seven, we tonight have a deputation from Christian Rotenberg Evans. I believe his mother is going to introduce him, and he's going to give us his speech that he has been presenting quite a bit recently. So we welcome both of them.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I would like to introduce Christian Rotenberg Evans. Christian is a grade 12 student at St. Mary's High School. Christian recently won the provincial gold medal at the Royal Canadian Legion's speaking competition, which starts with thousands of children reciting their speeches in their classrooms all over the province. Maybe some of your children have been involved in speeches. Christian's speech received standing obations at each level of competition, and he's inspired many people to share their story with him, some for the very first time. He knows that carrying around the weight of such a secret is a tremendous burden. His goal is to get people talking about sexual assault, specifically student-on-student sexual assault, and to remove the shame associated with being a victim. Christian is brave and resilient, and honestly, he's quite incredible, and we're really very proud of him. Christian's message is one that all adults, especially those who work in some capacity with children, should pay attention to. Christian's purpose is not to vilify the high school he is from or the school board that it's in, but to encourage all of us to continue to do the right thing and to label student-on-student sexual assault when it occurs in our schools and on our local sports teams and clubs. We need to talk about the reality and prevalence of sexual assault committed by young people on other young people, because like you will hear from Christian, the price of silence is too high. He wants to make change within the system, and that starts with all of us. Thank you for welcoming him here to say his speech for you today.
Good evening, guys. Am I good to start whenever? When I was 14, I was sexually assaulted in the washroom of my high school. It started in shop class. He'd sneak up behind me and press tools under the back of my jeans. But not just me, other students, too. I spoke up, but his behavior reduced to kids fooling around. Boys will be boys. So instead of labeling his behavior as sexual assault and making him accountable for his own actions, we were all given the message to stop fooling around, when in reality, he was the only one who needed that message. He didn't stop, and the assaults only got worse. I witnessed him grab classmates' groins, slap their butts, and expose his privates, among other things. My breaking point was when I was alone in the washroom using the urinal during class. He came up behind me and reached between my legs. I couldn't react. I was frozen in place. It took me a long time to understand that when somebody is sexually assaulted, their brains essentially freeze. There is no fight or flight possible. And it took me a long time to forgive myself for not fighting back. But now I understand, I couldn't. My brain was in survival mode. I was embarrassed and felt alone. I promised myself nothing like this would ever happen to me again. I stopped using public washrooms and started having panic attacks. I couldn't concentrate in class and became hyper vigilant of anyone who looked at me or came close to me. Eventually, I told my parents, who went straight to the principal, who basically said his hands were tied, and then to the police, who filed sexual assault charges. After going through the court system, I appreciate how difficult it is for a victim of sexual assault to continue with the legal process. A restraining order was issued, and added complete courses and community service hours as retribution. And then, he was done. There was never a school suspension. Looking back, I'm sure it's because it might jeopardize his promising hockey career. Why ruin his life plans when he was just doing what boys do? After reporting the assault to the police, I was harassed by his hockey teammates for breaking the code. This is called reactivization, and it is very common after someone reports. They were relentless with their insults and rumors. But I remained silent because I'd already been made clear what happens to those who speak up. I felt trapped and ashamed, and I was also becoming increasingly angry and volatile. Other victims report self-harming behaviors such as cutting, substance abuse, and suicidal thoughts. I continued to spiral downwards. I could not articulate my feelings, so no one knew how excruciating my days were. I mean, how could some guy touch me in the washroom, cause all of this? What was wrong with me? I struggled with what I now know is anxiety, PTSD, and clinical depression. It was impossible to focus on anything, but what happened in that bathroom to my 14-year-old self. He was not required to miss one day of school, when I could hardly bring myself to go. I was a straight-A student when I entered high school, and then I was struggling to get credits. There was no reprieve and no escape until last year, when I found my voice once again and started to speak out. It's unnerving and uncomfortable to talk about, but student-on-student sexual assault happens at every level of education, from kindergarten to university. Children are warned to beware of adults, but no one warns them about their peers. It's easier to label the acts as bullying than to call them sex crimes. But that is what they are. Sexual assault is defined as an act that violates the sexual integrity of a victim. But we are so bombarded in the media with sexual images, it's hard to know what our sexual integrity even is, or when to recognize when somebody has crossed the line. And when we do, we use euphemisms, such as inappropriate touching, which downgrades the severity of the offense and helps to normalize it. Sometimes, a child who has touched their consent is told, "Well, maybe he or she dislikes you," or in other words, "This is how it is, kid. Put up with it." This behavior is normalized, even expected, and simply the price you pay for being female, or to belong to a team, or to fit with the popular group at school. Perpetrators learn that they can get away with it if it's phrased the right way. We were just playing. The whole team does it. I didn't mean anything by that. Or adults will help to cover it up. Case in point, the Canadian junior hockey team. So, no one talks about it, because to do so is to be ostracized. But we have to talk about it, ask questions, and demand transparency in our schools and on our teams, because the price of silence is too high. These are your children and grandchildren. I was asked why I chose such a heavy topic for this year's speech competition, when the majority of the speeches that advance are the ones that elicit laughter. I chose this topic because sometimes we need to stop laughing. We need to be honest about the prevalence of sexual assault in our schools. This is not kids being kids, and certainly not boys being boys. These are students who have violated the sexual integrity of another student. Standing up and speaking out is one of the hardest things I have ever done. But here I am, and I challenge you to stand with me. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Does any of you guys have any questions about it?
Councilor Farmer?
Through the chair, firstly, thank you so much. It's, like you identify, it's a topic and an experience that's so difficult for people to talk about, and that happens to a shocking number of folks. In Canada, one in three women, one in six men have experienced sexual violence in their lifetime. I'm also conscious that, as we heard in the introduction, that because you've opened yourself up with this topic, people have come to talk to you and to disclose, maybe for the first time in their own lives, and that that can put a lot of pressure on a person, and that ideally, you're not the person to our organization to support, to support folks. I was wondering, how have you been, how have you been taking care of yourself, or have you been able to find, I guess, other resources in the community to direct people towards? Because I'm sure that just by giving that powerful speech that you just gave, you become a safe person for a lot of people. They see themselves in you. They know they're not alone, and that can put a lot of pressure on you as well. How have you been coping with that? And is there anything that you think we should all know about where folks should go if they don't have parents as supportive as yours to disclose to and get support from?
So after majority of my speeches, or every speech, I guess, I had members from like the older population of our community coming up to me and telling me about their own stories. And for like them to tell me that, it's a big burden for me to like take in and understand what happened to them. But it also makes me feel good about myself that I, that they trust me with that story, and knowing that I've experienced that, I've experienced that, and I'll understand where they're coming from. And I also have an email set up for victims of sexual assault, where they can email me anonymously and tell me about their story, and like where else to reach out for help, and all that stuff. And I usually direct people towards victim services or the hospital, stuff like that. Yeah, of course.
Well, I'll just make a point. I had a little bit of a trailer. You conducted yourself extremely well on CBC, I think, about a week and a half ago, CBC Radio in the morning. And certainly, just congratulations to, again, how you conducted yourself tonight. And it sounds like you are completing your high school career, and certainly, I think we all wish you the very best in your future endeavors, wherever that may be taking you next year. Christian, outstanding job again tonight, and certainly, just a terrific amount of courage that you demonstrated.
Sure. Repeating what Scott has just said, I'm kind of stuck for worries, and I bet you've heard that a few times in the last few months. Pretty amazing. I've known your mom and dad for a long time, known your grandparents for a long time. I'm not surprised that, that you're this type of kid. And congratulations on what you're doing, the message that you're delivering, and how brave you are to do this. It's amazing. Thanks for bringing it to us, bringing it home after being all over the province and back into the city of On Sound's council chambers. So thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Thanks for having me, guys.
You can escape whenever you want to. Don't, don't wait for us. That's, thanks again.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. And unfortunately, Mr. Simmons has to follow that with his monthly updates, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and you're right. What an incredible message, an incredible young man. And when we talk about the future of the city and the future of our youth, hopefully that's a shining example of what we have to look forward to. So let me start with the city manager's update for June, and if I could have a slide. I'll start with the highlights first, as usual. We have a number of things going on, as we always do. And again, the purpose of this is some of these things may not be as spotlighted in a staff report or come out, so I try to make these things noticed and pull out these tidbits of information for you as council and those watching, and also for our staff who show up each and every day and give 110%. The Bay Shore Banquet Hall Washroom renovations have been completed. The gallery welcomed more than 90 people recently to the gallery for a day-long Pollinator Symposium, and that was all tied together with the launch of the Pollinate On Sound and River District Blooms Project. Permits issued from a building perspective for eight new townhouse units on 19th Street West. Construction value for the month of June to date, or as of last week, was $3.1 million. From a tourism and recreational and events perspective, TD Harbor Nights kicked off. We're glad to have it back. It started June 18th, and it was a great, a great showing first, for attendance. More than 450 people showed up for that first night. The visitor center opened for tourists and, and people that, when you host people into the city, it's a great place to stop into. And it opened on May 20th. We have a lot of On Sound branded merchandise for sale, as well as bike rentals that people can rent, pick up, and enjoy the harbor on bike and foot. I wanted to bring an update, too, on the former jail and courthouse that's being called the Royal Rose Court. So that development process started prior to this term of council, and it has a number of milestones within the planning process. But it's great to know that the development applications have all been received. Public notice will be issued in the coming weeks, and that development is still moving forward in a great way with proposing an event venue, visitor accommodations, restaurants, including a tea room and a bar in the former jail. That, I think, will be really neat. A museum gallery space, and also co-work space as an office business incubator. So the people that are taking on that project have done some fantastic work at other projects around the province. We're really excited about what they're coming forward with, and look forward to the public notice coming soon. The real important date with all of those permit applications is next, around next November, I believe, is the timeline for construction permits to be pulled. So we're getting closer to that. From an operational front, road rehabilitation contract and the stormwater master servicing study has been awarded. Field staff, for some reason, over the past few weeks, have been undertaking a number of sewer repairs. So if you see crews out working, I don't know if it's the extremely dry weather doing stuff to pipes in the ground, similar to frozen ground, but they've been out on a number of calls. And then also, ending the highlights, or prior to the last highlight, from a planning perspective and building perspective, permits have been issued for the tenant fit up for the new Mary Brown's Fried Chicken at the Thompson Centers Plaza, and also permits have been issued for the tenant fit up for the new Rens Pets in the Walmart Plaza area. So the pod buildings and retail spaces along that Walmart front. And if I could have a slide? And then I wanted to end highlights here with really, a really special, a really special donation to the city. So the Bowley family approached the city, as you recall, in 2021, about donating an arbor structure in the meadow on the east side of the river at Harrison Park. And that's what these pictures are. It's built. There is some additional landscaping that's going to be happening, but the structure's finished. And on behalf of the city, we just wanted to extend our gratitude to the Bowley family for making this beautiful and generous donation in memory of Barry Bowley for all to enjoy. So there are some recent pictures as of last week of that finished project. And slide. And I'm going to move into the committee updates. I'll note here that I'm only showing July committee updates, August, and I'll remind everybody, the month of August, we have no council or committee meeting scheduled. So these are the last set of committee meetings going into the August hiatus, and then we'll be back in full force for September. So Corporate Services, the July 13th meeting, we have a much anticipated short-term rental report coming on licensing of short-term rentals with a lot of great feedback and engagement from the community. I think the clerk had mentioned, there's well over 400 responses to that survey through our city, and that survey, I believe, just closed this past Sunday, yesterday, would be our past Sunday. Fire and Emergency Services is bringing their quarterly update, operations update, and Human Resources, our HR team is bringing a metrics report on recruitment selection and turnover that we hear so much about, just in general, about what's going on with, with that private sector, public sector. Finding labor is just an issue for everybody. The Development Charges Recommendation Report was scheduled for July. We are moving that to September 14th, the September Corporate Services Committee. Our Director of Corporate Services has been reaching out with one-on-one engagement with developers and others, and receiving that feedback, and we just believe it'll be a more fulsome report coming in September rather than July. And then the Capital Plan Update is a special meeting, afternoon meeting, July 24th, Committee of the Whole and Council. So note that with the new Capital Plan Update. Not with that on the slide. Operations Committee is scheduled for July 20th. We have an update to subdivision policies and engineering design standards. We have a speed limit reduction alternatives, traffic calming, and photo radar enforcement, and this is a response back report that committee had asked for. We have the final climate action strategy with recommending approval, an introduction to the new transit dashboard with our Constat data, and then the, that stands for wastewater quality management commitment and endorsement report from our Water Services Team. Slide. And the last committee, Community Services, well, sorry, Pam, it's not the last committee, but it's the last slide on this deck. Community Services Committee is scheduled for July 19th. We have a summary of the staff delegated 2023 events for city facilities and parks, and if council will recall, many of the events that happen annually were delegated to staff for approval and to move forward. But through that delegation, council also requested that we come back, you know, at least six, every six months with an update of what events have occurred. So that's what that report will accomplish. We have the agreement with Gray-Sabal Conservation Authority Non-Mandatory Services, and then we have our building bylaw update and development update. And that ends my presentation.
Is anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair. Point of clarification, so for the development charges study, developers are being consulted at this point. Is there any other opportunity for other folks to provide input, or is it just the identified stakeholders who are still being engaged for that consultation?
At this point, I'm working with the developers who provided feedback through written submissions as a part of the public meeting. We didn't receive any written submissions or questions from anyone other than those developers. However, the next report that would come forward through Corporate Services in September would be an information report, allow for conversation at that meeting, and then I would anticipate that the recommendation report would follow to council either later that month or in early October. Because of the hiatus in August, this really is only about a month later than we had originally anticipated for the bylaw.
Okay, I've got two questions. One's going to be, Pam's going to have to answer. I think the Bowley structure open for weddings and things. Are we going to have to book it, or is that thought through yet? Or it's just come and use?
Thank you, your worship. I'm certainly come and use. I think Leanne, our licensing coordinator, does have her eye on it, maybe as a potential venue that you would be able to book going forward for events. But for now, please come and use the space. It's beautiful to sit by the river, and as the city manager mentioned, a bit more landscaping to do, but certainly a beautiful spot.
That's the east side, sort of at the bottom of the old Toboggan Hill will be fantastic. I can just picture wedding photos with swans in the background and the river. It'll be amazing. For Mr. Simmons, my, my other question is, I keep getting asked about the, the apartment build that has been not moving across from in and the bay. Do we have anything that we can update? Because I know I'll be getting that question again.
Through you, Mayor. Sure. So our, our chief building official has been staying on top of that particular location in constant discussion with the developer and owner of the site. There are some legal proceedings, some other things happening within the next week or two, so we may have a further update at that time.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to the city manager. Is there any update on the exterior part of the former Leggitts Building on the corner of Second Avenue and Eighth Street?
I might ask the clerk if she could help me through the bylaw perspective.
Through you, your worship, to Councilor Keppke. Bylaw does have an open file on this matter and is working to address the concerns with the property owner.
How long do we let it go on?
Due to the fact that this will be going through the court system, it could be some time before that this, before this gets addressed.
Okay, now I think I can move on to number eight on our agenda, which is public question period. Ms. Bloomfield, were there any questions?
Through your worship, I received a couple of questions from Rebecca Russell, an On Sound resident. The first question is, what is the status of the report on making public washrooms more available? And the second question is, when can we expect the access to public washrooms to expand through either permanent or temporary installations?
Ms. Allen, is that your area?
I can provide, well, last year, we provided a public release of all of the available washrooms throughout the summer, so we'll certainly do that again, so that the public understands where and when the washrooms are open throughout the city. If council was interested in expanding our public washrooms, perhaps adding new public washrooms, I might suggest that that would be something good to bring forward at our capital budget update that's happening on July the 24th.
There any other, thank you. There any other questions? Brianne? It's just that one. Okay. Number nine, correspondence for which correction, which direction of council is required? We have none. At number 10A, we have a report from David Aston, and I'm going to hand the And I'm going to hand the microphone over to the Deputy Mayor.
Okay, so to the first report on the agenda this evening, I see the manager of planning, Sabine Robert, here. And Sabine, welcome this evening. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. Through the chair, I would like to introduce Dave Aston from AMHBC, who together with Alia Clark is the author of the recommendation report in front of you tonight. Dave will provide an overview of the report and the recommendation, and will be able to answer questions of council. Also joining us virtually are Aiden Periera from KLM Planning, and Walter Hugo and William Germanario from Willerbaud, who are representing Heritage Growth.
Great. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to give a brief overview this evening. What I'll just cover off this evening is, at a high level, the application. What has been submitted, provide some background associated with the application and overall the proposal in relation to the lands. Share a bit about the process that has been undertaken and what will be upcoming. And then highlight some of the official plan policies associated with recommendations and part of the, the recommendations that are before you this evening. Give you a overview of the policy framework in regard to the application that led to the recommendation. And I could all speak to the recommendation a little bit as well. And some additional information related to next steps, which would be site plan, just to give some indication of what the city will be looking for as part of that process. So with regard to the application, the application itself is proposed to amend a special provision applying to the lands. So the lands are currently zoned with a retail commercial with a special provision that was established, I think, just about over 10 years ago. And it's Special Provision 1489. And it has a list of provisions associated with permitted uses and how those uses are restricted by different types and definitions. And then site-specific development and building regulations. And what's being proposed by way of the applications is really to look to simplify those provisions while maintaining the list of permitted uses. And then also identifying the site-specific development and building regulations associated with the lands. The site, as you would know, as you've been, been traveling, Long Highway 26 has been developing over time with various phases and has been quite successful in attracting good tenants within the city and building out as part of the East City Commercial designation. The plan has been developing through site plan approval and various site plan agreements. And those have associated to both on and off-site works for the development. There is some shared easement arrangements associated with the Telfer Square lands. And work is being done to put the shared easement agreement back into place that was considered and approved back in 2020. And that time period lapsed, so there's work being done by the applicant to put that back into place. And there is an agreement between the two property owners associated with access for the lands. So what's being proposed through the zoning bylaw would facilitate development of a new grocery store and retail store on the site. And on this site plan that's been provided, there's a grocery store and a PetSmart that is shown. And that would be developed through access and parking associated with the plaza and the shared access that is adjacent to the proposed grocery store and the PetSmart. So this is in kind of the, one of the remaining quadrants of the, of the lands, the northeast quadrant of the lands on the site. Information that was provided with the application included the site plan, building elevations, survey, traffic opinion letter, preliminary servicing review, landscape plan, and retail market demand and impact analysis. And those were all items that were identified as part of the pre-application process that was identified by the city and provided to the applicant. So all of that work has been provided and, and has been reviewed. The peer review study is still under review. With regard to process, the application was deemed complete in May 2023. And the report here this evening is June 26th. So relative to the process timelines identified in the Planning Act, the city is, is doing a good job and ensuring that the timelines of 90 days to process an application are being considered. The site plan process would, would follow pending council decision this evening. And we've had discussions with the applicant today with regard to an approach to deal with the site plan and consideration of removal of the holding provisions concurrently. So just with regard to the official plan policy, as I mentioned, the lands are designated East City Commercial. East City Commercial designation, the planned function of that area is to accommodate large format retail uses, requiring large sites. And that's really what this site has been doing and how it has been developing over time. With regard to large format and, and service commercial and these types of uses within the East City Commercial area, there's also policies associated with the planned function of the East City area and the planned function of the River District as well. So there's policies associated with the ability for the city to consider limiting minimum and maximum gross floor area through a zoning bylaw amendment. And then also the policy requirement associated with the completion of a retail study or retail market analysis based on the size of proposed stores. So the, the size of the proposed stores triggers the retail market analysis. The applicant did complete the retail market analysis. Their analysis concluded there would be no impact on the East City Commercial or the River District area. But as I mentioned, there's some information outstanding from the city peer reviewer. And we've been in discussion with the applicant. And I understand they'll be reaching out to work with the city peer reviewer to address those comments accordingly. Access for the lands, there's a main access to the site. But as I mentioned, there is reference to a shared access. Given the location of these lands and the Telfer Square lands, there are policies associated with limiting or, or safe design associated with access to Highway 26. And the report tonight is identifying a holding provision subject to the completion of additional traffic opinion related to the design and, and the functional use of that access from safety considerations. And really the intent to have a shared access between the Telfer Square lands and the Heritage Grove lands, given the intent to limit accesses to Highway 26. So as mentioned early on, there's easement application being moved forward. There is an existing agreement. And what was discussed with the applicant this morning was additional information associated with the functional design in consideration of a release of what's proposed as a holding provision. As part of the review and the zone change application, there is a request to reduce the landscape strip adjacent to Highway 26 from 0.25 meters to 1.25 meters. In the report, this is really the only zoning bylaw amendment request that the city does not support. This gives consideration to wanting to ensure adequate landscaping between Highway 26 and large parking area. Also given consideration to pedestrian safety and convenience, adequate lighting and signage. So the reduced planting strip was not recommended as part of the recommendation for consideration this evening by city staff to council. As part of the application process, just like any application, the application was circulated to agencies for comment. A public meeting was held and comments were received through both of those processes. Those comments have been considered and responded to within the staff report. So with regard to the zoning bylaw amendment application, same except for the details associated with the, with not recommending the reduction landscape strip and the holding provision. An analysis of the planning framework has identified that the lands are consistent with provincial policy statement, conform to the Great County Official Plan and conform to the city official plan. As I mentioned, the bylaw itself, or the, the report is recommending two holding provisions to the bylaw. One is the completion and finalization of the retail market analysis to the satisfaction of the city. And the second relates to the functional design associated with the shared access. The report does identify, it's on page 45 of the report, a number of site plan control matters. And I don't intend to go through those in detail. But just do you want to suggest this evening that what we're dealing with is the, the details associated with the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw? There is the site plan review process that is still something that needs to occur. And given that that's a staff delegated process, we wanted to identify some of the key items that we'll be looking for as part of the site plan review process. And also to give some indication to the applicant on to what would be identified as matters that need to be addressed prior to any site plan approval associated with the development of the lands. So tonight, the recommendation from staff to council is to approve the Amendment Number 48 and direct staff to bring forward a bylaw to pass Amendment Number 48 to the city zoning bylaw as amended and give notice in accordance with Section 34 of the Planning Act. And the draft zoning bylaw is attached as a schedule. And that zoning bylaw, as I mentioned, provides recommendations to the request by the applicant, saving except for the planting strip, and identifies the two holding provisions and the requirements necessary to lift the holding provisions. Once those have been addressed, there would be a follow-up report and bylaw to council for that holding provision to be released. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, provide any clarification from this report.
Okay, thanks, Dave. I'm first going to go to Counselor Hamley for a question.
Just on the, the planting strip piece, where specifically was that on the site plan? I didn't really, couldn't really figure out where it was.
Through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Hamley, it's along Highway 26, the frontage of Highway 26. There is a proposed reduction there.
So are they like putting a turning lane there? Is that the idea?
No, so the planting strip is just essentially a landscape strip. Provides some buffer from the street to the parking areas. So the reduction was based on, I think, just the site plan concept the applicant could confirm, but the site plan concept and utilizing that space for additional parking and reducing the planting strip for the additional parking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Hamley. Next go to Counselor Dodd, then Counselor Farmer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a question. Like, so we've got a, in that report, I noticed there was a, a section about regarding this, the shared access, and that's obviously one of the components of, that is a holding provision along with that. How, is it common to have a shared access agreement regarding roadways? Like I've known in past developments, we've had it for hard services. One would run through another development to get to a neighboring, a neighboring property. But is it common to have a shared access agreement for two developers to use the same access point from a highway?
Through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Dodd, yes, it is common in scenarios where this, where the city or the municipality is looking to limit access to a roadway. Particularly its arterial roads or other major highways where you're, you're wanting to minimize those number of access points from a transportation movement perspective and also minimize traffic conflicts. So that, that is something that is common.
Perfect. Thank you. And so my next comment, I guess, or question with that is, so with watching with the new development or proposed development of these trucks, even driven on the drawings, like one truck is actually in a parking lot to get the radius or the movement to back up. So with all that increased traffic on that roadway, explanation or consideration of what more, I don't know. Is that, maybe can you further detail, maybe, what the purpose or what the plan will be to ensure safe driving conditions in that space when you've got potentially a grocery store that's got those trucks that are backing up into that space?
Through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Dodd, your question is exactly why we have identified the holding provision requirement. We'd like to see additional information from the applicant related to the functional design of that shared access that shows how trucks would access the rear of the grocery store at the same time. How vehicles coming into this, into the site from the street would interact if there was a truck backing up? And how does that relate to safety concerns with all of those different types of traffic movements? So we, we've asked for the holding provision there to make sure that we can understand that functional design at this point in the process. And then the details associated with the implementation of that functional design would, would be detailed through the site plan approval.
Okay. And I guess further to that, what happens if they're, they're unable to come to an agreement, I guess? And when you have two developers or two individuals who say, you know, they're not able to come to an arrangement on how to use that, that space? Is it then up to the municipality to try to find another access point, or what's the next steps from that? And the only reason I'm bringing this up is, we've got, you know, two great developments that are expanding, and we want to make sure that the municipality is doing everything possible to ensure, one, that obviously they're, they're following proper planning policy and, and what our official plan states, but also making sure that we're being accommodating as well to ensure that the development still can occur.
Through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Dodd, yeah, we, that's the discussion we had with the applicant this morning. And our understanding is that the shared access is on the Heritage Grove lands. There is agreement. There is agreement. Those types of agreements between the landowners are really a function of how the landowners have agreement. But what the city is requesting is to ensure that that access does work and does function to address the traffic movements and the truck movements. And once that is identified, then the city can move forward with releasing the H and the site plan approval. And then on a go forward, how that shared access would would be constructed and maintained, we understand, is the function of the agreement between the landowners. So it would be our opinion that there's there is an approach to find a safe functional design to allow for both developments to proceed. It's just information that that we still need to see at this stage of the application.
Perfect. So just to clarify that, that you're saying that that shared access, that arrangement, that detail, isn't really a municipal issue, that's more of a developer collaboration to figure out how they're going to utilize that, that, is that correct?
Through Deputy Mayor, the functional design and how the access interacts with highway 26 and consideration of the site design and safety, that is a municipal issue relative to site planning and overall considerations of official plan policy for safe access. But once there's an understanding that that design, the design of that access can function, the the maintenance, construction and and kind of overall long term approach to that access will be something that would be maintained through the the landowners or developers' agreement.
Okay, perfect. So I appreciate that, thank you, because that gave me so much information. So I'm very appreciative of that, Dave. So last last question I have is just regarding those holding provisions. You noted the one regarding the highway access, that's going to be in place until there's adequate information to identify that we can remove that H because of that access. Market study, market study has been received from what we read in the report. How long generally does a holding provision stay in place for with something like that?
Through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Dodd, the marketing study has been received, the city peer reviewer has reviewed and provided comments. In our discussions with the applicant applicant today, we suggested they reach out and communicate with the city peer reviewer. I think that that's something that wouldn't take very long to be resolved. Don't know the exact timing, but it's, you know, I think there's a fairly quick response time to that.
That's great. Thanks so much, Dave.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Dodd. Counselor Farmer next, then Counselor Merton.
Thank you through the chair to Dave. I'm a little confused. It seems like there are a lot of questions that that the report highlights are going to be laid out in the site planning and approval process. My first question is, to what extent is the plan that we we saw included with the package confirmed? Or is that the intention at this time? We're only dealing with zoning at the moment? And even something like the like, is even this the location of a building up in the air for site planning approvals at this point? Or or does this reflect the substantial truth of what will be built or approved?
Through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Farmer, the site plan application is not yet been deemed complete. So there is still a process associated with the site plan application. What's been included with the package has been received, and there's been a review relative to understanding the zoning bylaw request with that site plan. There is still some potential that through the site plan process, there may be some changes associated with that. What we're trying to understand is for for the holding provision is how, you know, something like the site access will function to then understand the overall layout of the site plan. So there are still items that need to be resolved through the site plan process, and we know that they'll need to make a change, the site plan, to respond to the staff recommendation associated with not reducing the landscape strip. So we do anticipate there'll be some additional site plan information forthcoming. But this evening, what we're recommending is a land use, which is really the first step to continue to proceed with the site plan details.
Thank you. And one final question, even comparing the site plan that was included with the package and the ortho photo, I have a particular interest in the landscaping and inclusion of planting strips and green spaces and paved areas. The 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 plan seems to suggest that there are planting strips even towards the south end of the development that the ortho photo show as a hard surface or concrete. To what extent does the site planning or the, to what extent does the site plan need to reflect the final built product when even in something like we see in front of us a site plan for a proposed development and a picture of what's there that has already been constructed don't necessarily match up in terms of what's there?
Through Deputy Mayor, I'm not really quite certain on on the comment of what's there versus what's proposed. Typically, the intent is that what you're seeing in the ortho and what's been approved by the site plan are in step. There are minor deviations that occur over time that are typically picked up through that could be picked up through as-built drawings. So I'm I'm just not, I see the site plan on the screen behind you, Counselor Farmer.
Yeah, just specifically, there's a in the center, what would be currently the western edge of the the building that is currently Value Village at the border of the what is currently an empty lot. Even that that center median between the two primary parking spaces appears as green space in the plan and is is looks like concrete on the ortho photo, as well as those various dividers on the the southern edge, closest to those two, those two buildings. I just have a particular interest in in making sure that we're following best practice when it comes to laying these things out. And and I'm wondering about that discrepancy, but that may be a deeper question for another time if this is not totally appropriate.
Through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Farmer, sometimes on site plans where there are pedestrian walks, they're shown as landscape versus, you know, like part of the parking lot. And I think that's the one that you're suggesting, I'd call it on the most east side where the site plan shows a green strip, but actually is a appears to me to be a pedestrian connection from north to north to south. But that's something that as we can take a look at and have a follow up discussion with the applicant. But I think that's a detail that that if you leave.
That makes sense to me, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that explanation, Dave. Counselor Merton next, and then Counselor Minogue.
Through you, Acting Chair, Deputy Mayor. Further to Counselor Dodd's comments about the holding provision, I understand that site delegation will occur around the site plan. But there are some concerns around the holding provision, especially around the traffic, that I think are significant. And certainly already, I can speak for myself, and I don't want to assume others have, but I've been hearing people who have concerns already around the traffic potential and the truck use. In an instance where there is a holding provision, is it possible for council to receive information back on the resolution related to the specific items regarding the holding provision, especially the traffic, the one with the trucks?
Through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Merton, and and maybe Sabine could confirm or or the CIO, but the intent of the holding provision is just that to bring a report back to council to identify how the matter's been resolved for council consideration to approve removal of the bylaw or the provision.
Thank you.
Thanks for that response, David. It does remind me of some other zoning bylaw amendment discussions we've had where we have these holding, I mean, we see the report again, and we all go, why are we seeing this again? And it's just for that exact reason, it's it's a holding provision that's in place at that time. Counselor Minogue?
Thank you through you, Deputy Mayor, Acting Chair. Dave, I'm not sure if this is a question for you or more for our planning staff. But with the regard to the retail market analysis and the holding provision on that, is it possible for council to override that and just remove the holding provision? They've submitted the market analysis. I've read through the majority of it, and I just, I'm not really understanding what information could be forthcoming that would change anything about this development. Would we say yes or no and tell them, no, you can't put in a grocery store based on anything in this? Like, I I'm having trouble understanding why we require this. It just seems like another level of red tape and bureaucracy that seems unnecessary to me when, you know, there's already so many different levels that we have to operate under that why put another onus on a developer that seems to me it doesn't really change anything or make any difference? So that's just my question.
Through through Deputy Mayor, fair question. I think the intent of the policies is to have the study completed to ensure there is no impact on other retail users or the River District downtown. So the function of the study is to really understand if there will be an impact relative to different criteria. I think in this context, there's just some discrepancy of numbers that were used in the existing information associated to vacant floor areas in the River District relative to what's being proposed. Again, I don't know that it's 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 a matter that can't be resolved quite quickly. The recommendation before you is staff recommendation of, I think council is can always take the recommendation and make a decision. But what I'd also suggest is, as the city completed the new official plan, which was recently approved, there was a change associated with policy and retail market studies whereby the requirement was scoped somewhat so that there was just consideration to the scale of development that may have a direct impact on the River District. So I think what is when it's requested and as a policy, it provides a good guide, your good gauge or test to ensure there is no impact. In this case, the applicant's analysis has has concluded, in their opinion, there's no impact. And with the H provision, we're just suggesting that there's a little bit more work to be done before the city's peer reviewer can sign off and agree to the applicant's recommendation.
Okay, good enough. And Counselor Hamley, perhaps you're willing to move the recommendation as well?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor, I will move the recommendation, but I'm going to do that without the last portion of the first piece, which is the exception of the proposed amendment to the planting strip requirement. I think it's, I think this is short on parking spaces as it is. If we went forward with that piece, we would probably lose a number of other parking spots. So I don't think that's, that doesn't work for me.
Okay, it's probably reasonable to go to staff for for just some explanation on the impact of that. So whether that's Sabine or Dave, if you'd like just to to speak to that.
Just Deputy Mayor, may I just clarify, is the motion to continue with the applicant's request of the .25 meters? Is that what's being being modified?
Yeah, that would be the intention of removing that piece of the recommendation.
Okay. So I think what the applicant has been indicating is that the site plan is meeting the city's parking requirements. They're not requesting a reduction at this point. What I would suggest is that when it comes to the site plan, the applicant could look at other alternatives associated with parking. The final square footage of the food store, the or the pet food store, I'm not certain is confirmed, but I guess based on the site plan with the application, that's what's being proposed. I would just suggest to you that the 1.5 meter landscape strip would provide a good buffer in transition from highway 26. There is a landscape strip on the site plan on lands to the west or earlier phases, and the continuation of a planting strip along the frontage, in my opinion, would be, you know, a better design for this area and would really minimize the appearance of a large parking area right along the street. So I I think there there is merit to maintaining the landscape strip where it's, you know, really budding, a large parking area. Maybe there's some other ways to address landscaping through the site plan process. Maybe there's then enhanced landscaping within the city component of the right of way as as an alternative suggestion if you're going to reduce the the planting strip.
Thanks, Dave. We'll go back to Counselor Hamley just for some further clarification there, I think.
But like, that's great. But if you're a developer, I think the easiest, quickest thing to do is to remove parking. And by this report, we're already seven spaces short. So, you know, I just, I think what we're asking with the planting strip is a little too far.
And I'll go to Counselor Farmer next. We do have the motion on the floor this time.
Thank you. I cannot support the motion as proposed by Counselor Hamley. When we when we talk about the number of parking spaces that are required and we talk about planting strips, what we're talking about in combination is what is both the form and the function of our city? And to have only pavement, like a .25 of a meter, I will confess, I still mostly think in feet for that kind of distance, is a very small amount. And what is 1.5, like roughly six feet, maybe a little less? Dave, feel free to nod if my trends, yeah, if if my metrics are off. But this is one of the entrances to our town. And if we're going to have a spot that that we drive into town and for a single development, there is a reduced amount of green space, then what we have is just asphalt and concrete. And it doesn't look good. It's not best practice in terms of having a place that feels good to move through, which then encourages people to do things like walk. It's not best practice in terms of maintaining things like boulevard trees and things like that that can provide shade and reduce heat island effects and also create then a buffer so that driving into town, you're not just looking at big box store after big box store like we see in many small southern, like southwestern Ontario towns. And this is one small thing that we can do to move towards best practice that for the sake of a prescribed number of parking spaces that's based on our own plan, not necessarily based on what's practical. And we have experience in Owen Sound where something like the required number of parking spaces that were necessary for zares, when it was developed, that whole parking spot was then reduced because they realized they didn't need all those parking spaces, and they could further develop the spot by adding the other businesses that are now on that property and in that plaza. So if we're taking by our baseline property and in that plaza. So if we're taking by our baseline measurement, what's in our official plan, that's just, and Dave can correct me here, based on a ratio that we've made up that doesn't necessarily reflect a future where not everyone is driving their own car everywhere, especially as we talk about affordability and the increasing unaffordability of gas and all the other things that come along with vehicle ownership. It doesn't reflect a future where we want people to both feel comfortable and be able to move around by anything other than their own personal car. And I think this is one small thing that we can do for, for what is a reasonably small square footage along one side of the property that would have it conform with what we currently have as, as a requirement. And I think that the motion is presented favors vehicular traffic and parking more than it favors the look of Owen Sound, the functionality of Owen Sound, and our own development guidelines as they're currently written. So I can't support the motion as presented.
Okay, and I'll go to Councilor Kepke and then Councilor Middleborough next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would really appreciate if staff would address the podium and the site plan was put up there and it get explained to us on the site plan where these particular green strips are that we're talking about and what is being proposed.
Okay, thanks, Marion. And I see Sabine coming up to the podium at this time, too. So we'll just pull it right up and we'll ensure that everyone's got complete clarity on, on what we're discussing here.
Stacy, if you can focus in on the northwest corner. Keep zooming. Keep going. Now scroll over. No, stay up, but just scroll over as far as you can to the right. Yeah. Dave, interrupt me whenever you need to. So as soon as it comes into focus, you'll see if it can, or maybe need to scroll out a bit. Sorry. But it should come into focus because the other part did, right? Yes, but it's sort of, I think the crux of the discussion is that it's 0.25 meters and it's really sort of a small space. And it's, yeah, along that yellow, where you see the yellow highlighted parking spaces, that's where the proposed planting strip narrows down to 0.25, whereas the required in the zoning bylaw is the 1.5 meters. And it's really, and I think Dave alluded to this, is intended to provide for landscape plantings or is an area that allows you to plant, plantings of a size that can soften and buffer that expanse of asphalt as you're driving by. Dave, do you want to add to that?
Thanks, Sabine. Through Deputy Mayor, that's the intent. And as you take a look at that strip, it really is what I call the, the most easterly parking block that's pushed forward just as the site access shifts around the building. So there could be some site design that, that could work to bring those parking areas into alignment. And you can see to the east, there is a landscape strip along Highway, Highway 26. So that's the recommendation to look to have that landscape strip to, you know, provide a buffer to those cars parked there and some visual streetscape for those along Highway 26.
Okay, thanks, Dave. I'll go to Councilor Kepke again, and then Councilor Hamley, he's moved the motion. I think he just wished to speak to it. Go ahead, Marion.
Okay, thank you for that. And I also noticed there's a green strip along the walkway inside. And I would agree that that's good to have a buffer between that and the parking. But why, explain to me in the recommendation, why does it say with the exception of the proposed amendment to the parking strip? And what is the proposed amendment?
Through Deputy Mayor, what's meant by with the exception is that all other requests from the applicant are being supported, with the exception of the request for the planting strip that is from the requirement of 1.5 meters to 0.25 meters.
So the applicant wants to make it narrower than it is. The city wants to maintain what we're seeing here. And you can ask that. That's not my question. I'm good with what you've told.
Yeah, through Deputy Mayor, just to clarify, the city would like to maintain what the current zoning bylaw requires. That's not what's shown on the site plan on your screen. That's what's the applicant's request of 0.25 meters.
And I'll go to Councilor Middleborough next.
Thank you. Through you, Acting Chair. In the interest of moving this along, is this something that's under site plan control with staff? And could we approve it at the 0.25 that they are requesting and leave it up to staff in the negotiations of the site plan to figure it out and make it work? Like, if they need that flexibility, if maybe they need another half a meter, then we're at least giving them the half a meter and maybe we'll have a one meter planting strip. But I just, if that's the flexibility that they need to get this in motion and move it along, then can we approve it and leave it up to staff?
Through Deputy Mayor, I can try to respond to that. I'm not sure if there's others in, in council chambers to respond. If, if you approve it this evening at 0.25 meters, then, you know, that's the bylaw requirement and the applicant could work to that as the requirement. Perhaps there's some, some opportunity to work with them on additional space in that location. But if there's an impact to the parking, maybe that's not feasible for them at this time and they would continue with what's being proposed. As I mentioned, maybe there's opportunity to work with them to have additional planting within the city's right-of-way, if that's something that's feasible as an alternative to the reduced onsite, or to look and work with them to have something more what I'd call enhanced at the far northeast corner of the site, where they do have a bit of a larger landscape area at the end of the parking row. So if, if it's going to be reduced, perhaps some direction to enhance in some other areas is something that, you know, city staff, I'm sure could work with the applicant on.
Okay. And before I just speak to it, I'll go back to Councilor Hamley. Were you, you could speak to that?
Just one final point. Like, I would draw everyone's attention to the planting strip in the rest of that corridor. It's a similar 0.25. Like, it's, it's not significant. That's my final comment.
Okay. And I'm just going to, before I call the vote, I'll vote on this myself if needed. I think what we're looking to do here is just maintain consistency in softening up the, the look of the property from the highway as we've been doing it. As, so as we go along the full build out there, we've been consistent. We're trying to soften the property up. So I, you know, I think at this time, I'll just call the vote. It's, the motion's been explained properly and it can be defeated. And we can come back to moving a motion that's just more consistent exactly with our city's official plan. It's in our city's official plan to maintain urban guideline development as you're moving into the city or gateway or however we want to describe it in the official plan. But anyway. Go ahead, Councilor Burton.
Through you, I require clarification from a procedural perspective. We have a motion that's been presented and there was an amendment proposed to a motion that, and I just need to know where we exactly are with this motion. If I could please have clarification.
I'll work with the clerks, but it was moved part one and part two. And within part one, the last part and represents good planning with the exception of the proposed amendment to the planting strip requirement. That was the part that was removed from the recommendation. Back to Councilor Hamley.
Yeah, that, well, I didn't remove the "and represents good planning" piece.
The clerks are nodding, so you're clear there? Okay. At this time, all those in favor of that motion carrying. And I see two, all those opposed. And that motion is defeated. So follow-up motion, Councilor Farmer.
I would move the recommendation as included in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And any opposed? And that is carried, as approved. Thank you very much. Thanks for joining us here this evening, Dave, and walking us through the zoning bylaw amendment. Hopefully, the applicant can speed right along on the development and keep working with staff in the site plan approval.
Thank you.
This time, we'll just await Mayor Body to come back into the chambers.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Gregg, for getting through that. So I assume we're at 10B or did you do both? So 10B, we have a report from Community Development Coordinator with regard to animation. So that's not, that's not like movies, is it? Of the River District.
Thank you, Worship. This is a report, as you mentioned, regarding the animation of the River District through promoting sidewalk merchandise displays. So the animation of the River District is supported by the official plan, the Harbor and Downtown Master Plan, as well as the River District Action Plan. And the goal really is to create a vibrant, active and attractive space that's comfortable, accessible and safe. We've recently heard from businesses in the River District that they would like to have merchandise displays on the sidewalk on a regular basis. The City Street Furniture and Sidewalk Patio Guideline provides details for the placement and approval of merchandise in the sidewalk area, and that is shown in an attachment to the report. We're proposing in support of River District businesses, a one-year trial on Saturdays and Sundays, July 1st to October 31st, in accordance with the guidelines. So where it would be placed, things like insurance would all be required. We would be promoting this idea to businesses. And then once we get a group of businesses who are going to participate, we'll be promoting, promoting and marketing this initiative through social media. The recommendation then is that council would approve the one-year trial as outlined in the report, including the waiver of the $50 annual fee associated with the, the approval.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. I'd be more than happy to move the recommendation.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you to the Director. Stores having things out front is not something new. We've often seen that before. So why is this being presented as if it's something new and wonderful and, and we're waiving the fee?
Through you, Worship, there is a requirement for you, if you wanted to have merchandise on the sidewalk to apply, provide a little plan so that we can know that the sidewalk will remain accessible and safe for pedestrians and that you normally provide insurance indemnifying the city. And there's a $50 fee for the season. Not many businesses have been doing this. And so there's interest from the businesses and maybe doing this on a regular basis on Saturdays and Sundays for those who want to participate and sort of making it a sidewalk Saturday type of event. So it has been permitted, but not many people have been taking advantage of the opportunity.
Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else. I will call the question all in favor. And that is carried. Deputy Mayor Gregg, again, I think to report from Gray County Council.
It was quite a light agenda and the materials were not particularly relevant to Owen Sound, so nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Number 11 is our consent agenda.
Through you, Worship, on the consent agenda this evening is a report on an amendment to the Emergency Management and Response Bylaw and changes to the emergency plan. There is a report on the strategic plan aggregated by annual key result status update. There is a report on a tiered response agreement with County EMS, a report on an appointment to the Operations Committee and a vacancy on the Community Development Tourism and Culture Advisory Committee. There is a report on the Owen Sound Bay Sox licensed event at Tom Williams Park. And there are minutes for receipt from the Owen Sound Housing Company, the Owen Sound Municipal Nonprofit Housing Corporation and Owen Sound Police Services Board. A Hockenheim Pether license was issued to T2 Green. And the last item on the consent agenda is the information package. A full listing is available at 11K.
Thank you, Councilor Dodd.
Thank you, Worship. Move by myself that City Council receives items 11A to 11K on the consent agenda dated June 26, 2023, and further that the recommendations contained in items 11A to 11E be approved.
And all in favor? That's carried. So when I go back through, I see three sets of minutes from Owen Sound Housing or Nonprofit Housing. Anything to report?
Nothing additional to add.
Thank you. I also see Owen Sound Police Services Board minutes.
Through you, Mr. Chair. It was a regular police board meeting that started with the deposition presented by Peter Reed from Crime Stoppers, highlighting the effective and effective contribution to the program towards crime reduction. The board unanimously supported Waterloo Police Services Board in draft motion on bail reforms. Other than that, there were reports presented by Senior Inspector Bishop and Flonie, which included the crime branch investigation, drug enforcement, auxiliary. The details are there in the board. If any questions, I can answer those. The board also shared the operational plan for 2023 to 2026 was shared and discussed. That's all from my head.
Good. Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay, good. Thank you very much. So that gets us through consent. Oh, correspondence was requested there? Yeah, you had a question. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the Chair, I just want to draw attention to the letter regarding the expansion of strong mayor powers to more municipalities. And just for some context, in 2022, the provincial government introduced Bill Three, which gave special powers to the mayors of Toronto and Ottawa, giving them veto over certain bylaws passed by council, the ability to hire and dismiss senior managers, and stewardship, stewardship over the city budget. Back in December, Bill 39 expanded the scope to allow mayors to pass bylaws with only a third of council. And importantly, these powers can only be used to support the provincial government's agenda. On June 16th, just recently, we saw the provincial government announce that it will extend strong mayor's powers to an additional 26 municipalities. And in the short term, the time that I've been on council, we've received correspondence from many municipalities expressing concern about the expansion of this policy. Notably, there's no indication that these powers will result in more homes being built as was originally intended. They create the enforced impression that the majority of the factors creating the housing crisis are local or municipal in nature. They risk politicizing the positions of senior staff who can be dismissed unilaterally. And these strong mayor powers erode the democratic process by making it possible for the minority to rule around tables like ours. One of the beautiful things about our municipal democracy is that our community elected all of us as a constellation of voices. As individuals, we have different As individuals, we have different perspectives, experiences, and values, but sitting around this horseshoe gives us the opportunity to try to find common ground that most of us are okay with, and as a result, to create policies that better reflect our community as a whole. Strong mayor powers threaten that possibility. And taken with the changes made by Bill 23 and 97 to municipal planning and decision-making represent a considerable erosion of municipal autonomy, well, and by extension, our community's autonomy, over just the past 12 months. I see no reason to assume that the expansion of strong mayor powers will stop with the current round of municipalities. And to that end, I move that we direct staff to monitor policy changes around strong mayor powers, to include these resources in intergovernmental relations work plans, sorry, and to include these concerns in intergovernmental relations work plans, and to make council aware of any future opportunities to provide feedback on these policies through provincial channels or by signing on to statements from other municipalities or organizations like the AMCTO, as we saw in that correspondence package. Do you need the last part again slower? Oh, and Scott has.
There is so much to that motion and that you just spoke to. I would be better prepared if it had been spoken to in advance. That, like, I couldn't support it because in the moment, I hardly have a clue on to what degree of staff resources that would consume. So perhaps if you could rephrase it or present it through a committee where there might be an opportunity for it to go through a discussion, but I couldn't, I couldn't support it tonight. It's, there's too voluminous.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may rephrase, I move that we direct staff to monitor policy changes around strong mayor powers, to include concerns about the expansion of strong mayor powers in intergovernmental relations work plans, and to make council aware of any future opportunities to provide feedback on these policies through provincial channels or by signing on to statements like that from AMCTO.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Go ahead.
Through you, your worship. It would be wonderful if, as a council, we even had a chance to share our ideas and our concepts and hear from our mayor about his impression regarding this. You know, we are to build consensus, but without communication and engagement and understanding of the impact on our municipality, I think monitoring is one functionality, understanding through communication is another. Our mayor is connected in a variety of ways with other mayors, and I'm just wondering if, if at this point, we need to have further opportunity to understand the implications from our mayor's perspective and also within a smaller rural municipality.
Anyone else comment? This came as a result of the large mayors urban, I forget what it's called. There's an association that we are not a member of that's all large mayors. This is large cities. These are all 100 and something thousand people each. These are all a couple of, like, 100-plus thousand people each. They lobbied for it as an organization. To the best of my knowledge, AMO isn't lobbying. I can't see the town of 20,000 people ever being into a strong mayor system. I don't know if we could turn it down if it was offered. I don't know how you would use it in a small town, and it's not on my radar because I don't think it's ever going to be. It's very clear that it was the big cities that wanted it and that got it, got it for a variety of reasons. So I really don't have much to add to it.
Well, I still won't support it. I just, I'm not saying I don't support the intention and that I might be dead set against the strong mayor's abilities. I just can't support. I think the onus right now is on me to continue to inform myself on how this is being rolled out through the province. And I just have too much reluctance upon putting any more work on, on staff to, to have to, to follow along. This is, this is on me to try to inform myself as best I can, I think.
Looking that way, seeing nothing. Looking that way. Go ahead.
If that, if the desire for more information and more time is shared, I would be happy to withdraw the motion and to bring it back as a notice of motion for a, at a future meeting.
Testing, testing.
Okay, you're getting that? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
We're good? We're good, your worship?
The last point was me withdrawing my motion.
We understand that if you're on Rogers, you can see us and hear us right now, but our internal system has gone down, and we're just trying to get it back up so we can, so we can view it, and we'll be back in a minute. There we go. I'm just looking at the clock. It's 7:13 in front of me. We'll continue with the meeting, and I understand it's live on Rogers, and we'll pick it back up. So if I can go back, we're dealing in the correspondence file. Councilor Farmer had made a motion, and there is some discussion around that, and I'll go back to him.
Thank you, through the chair. Respecting what I've heard from fellow council members, I will withdraw that motion and bring it again with a full notice of motion to a subsequent meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So then, we're down to number 12, which, starting with minutes of Accessibility Advisory Committee on May 23, 2023. Councilor Merton.
Through your worship. In the minutes of the Accessibility Advisory Committee of May 23, 2023, of particular note is a deputation from Sean Tuckett, manager of Wago, regarding transit services, as well as a presentation by John Stolcom, GM Loop Plan Engineering, regarding the Alpha Street reconstruction. As a result of input from the public members, the committee recommended that city council direct staff to include a minimum of two rest stops on the Alpha Street Hill at a maximum of 100 meters between stops on a level graded area, and in the design for the rest stops, a hard surfaced area adjacent to the bench for those with mobility devices. In addition, the Accessibility Advisory Committee discussed the changes to the recommendations regarding the mobility transit application and mobility transit fare review, as approved from, by council from the March 23, 2023 minutes. A motion was approved by the committee that the city council direct staff to bring forward a report to the operations committee respecting a review of transit fares, including an affordable transit fare option. With that, I request approval of the advisory council, Accessibility Advisory Council or Committee Minutes and the recommendations contained therein.
That's great, thank you. Questions? Question?
I'm just, I'm just a little concerned about the recommendation on the Alpha Street reconstruction. And I would just, before I vote for anything, I'd really like some, has staff done any kind of analysis on what, what the implications are of these recommendations? Because it is a low pedestrian traffic corridor, and, you know, there may be, the cost benefit analysis on this might not be.
Through, through your worship, to Councilor Hamley. Yes, the consultant had included costs associated with the various, like, concepts for the design. I don't have the number in front of me, but the cost implication of the rest stops was primarily centered around additional height and length of retaining wall. But, yeah, I can't remember the, the cost off the top of my head.
I do recall we did approve one rest stop. So I, I, I think without, me personally, without us having a little firmer details on, on this portion, I don't feel comfortable supporting this.
Go back to Councilor Merton. Can we, can we put that portion of the minutes up in front of us? No, we can't, because we don't have the computer. Was it, was it a recommendation? So that means it's just a recommendation that would be considered?
Thank you, your worship. I can clarify it a little bit more. Whether or not it's one or two or three, in the grand scheme of things, that additional cost is inconsequential because the, the cost was associated with moving the retaining wall further back into the hill, and the plan was for it to be in that alignment, whether it was three rest stops or one rest stop. Like, the proposed is two, but it doesn't matter. It's a one continuous alignment of retaining wall. It wasn't going to be bump outs or anything around the rest stops.
I'm going to go back to Uprock just to finish his thought.
But I would add that the second part of it is a hard surfaced area, right? Which, which implies either asphalt or cement or something.
Councilor Kepke, I think, has the answer.
Hopefully, I do. This was brought to us by Member Jason Crone, who said personally, he, being a very strong individual in a wheelchair, could not get up that hill more than 100 meters before he would need a rest. He suggested the second one being another 100 meters. The reason for the pad on the side is for him to put his wheelchair into so he's not impeding any traffic that would go up and down the hill. So that hard surface pad is beside the rest stop, and it's for accessibility issues.
So, Marion, so it isn't changing the wall, then? It's just beside the wall? Okay. Go ahead.
And I can just speak from the operation, the operations committee. The rest area was approved by committee and then subsequently endorsed by council at the, at the next meeting where the where the minutes were approved. And its cost estimates for the upgrade is $150,000. But as the director alluded to, it's, it's inconsequential because it's in the presentation that the retaining wall extends up in its entirety setback. So that, that's the direction that we, we as the committee at the time have moved forward with and this is just harmonious or aligned to that. So I have support for it.
Do you need?
Through your worship, further to Counselor Kepke, the advantage of going through the Accessibility Advisory Committee is that we have those who are identified as having particular needs. And in addition to what Counselor Kepke had identified, those with walkers and those who are mobility challenged through endurance issues, it allows equity in accessibility to be able to rest along the way. Your point is well taken, Counselor Hamley, around cost, but I think we've addressed that issue. And I think this points to the, the content expertise by having the public who sit on that accessibility committee help guide us. And it certainly was commented at the committee that, certainly from Mr. Stolcom and, and that it's helpful to be able to get that perspective because otherwise they may not have been able to receive that information to help make it better in the planning stages. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Farmer?
Through the chair, I think that it's important that we support motions like this. Yes, it's come through the Accessibility Committee, but design elements like this are part of building our, building Owen Sound into a more age-friendly community. It benefits people who, like, like member Crone who might be in a wheelchair. It benefits people who have walkers, but it also, like, I think about myself as a parent with, who pushes a stroller around. If I'm going to stop partway up that hill, I don't want to have to leave that stroller on something that's not flat or in the middle of that active transportation lane. And I think this is a great example of how when we design something that's accessible for, as accessible as it can be, it benefits a whole range of, well, everyone, to quote Counselor Merton.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else seeing none others? I will call the question on favor. So that is carried. And next at 12B is the Minutes of Community Development Tourism Cultural Advisory Committee from June 9.
Thank you, your worship. There's a number of updates in there that are pretty dated and I think everybody knows about them. So I'll skip over them and speak to the, the recommendation that's in the minutes, which is on the potential municipal accommodation tax. This is the result of a lengthy process that started, I think, probably two years ago, maybe more. And I will let the Director of Community Services briefly speak to the bylaw itself in a moment. But in terms of next steps for us, the motion would, would take the MAT for a legal review. It would arrange third-party collection of, of the MAT funds. It would issue an RFP for a nonprofit corporation to use 50% of the funds to promote tourism within our community and encourage overnight stays, which is required by law. And one thing that I should note, it, we do need to make a decision on the short-term rentals piece, which will be coming to Corporate Services soon. And then, once the MAT is implemented, there would be a comprehensive review after one year to assess the effectiveness. And I'll go to the Director of Community Services for the bylaw specifically.
Thank you, your worship. As Counselor Hamley mentioned, this process started back in March of 2022. And at that time, there was really a handful of Ontario municipalities who were looking to utilize this tool provided by the province to collect this fee from people who are visiting our community. At the meeting on June 9, I shared with committee that now there's 46 municipalities on Ontario who've implemented MAT tax and 10 like us who are studying the opportunity further. So MAT, just as a reminder, is a tax or fee levied on short-term or transient stays, which include hotels, motels, B&amp;Bs, short-term rentals, as well as campgrounds. So the report provided a summary of the feedback that we received from the motels and businesses. In total, there was 45 people respond to the survey. Half of those were accommodators and of that half, 75% of them were short-term accommodators. There was a smaller number of hotels, motels and B&amp;Bs. The thing that came out of that most interestingly, or what we were really focused on, were the areas where the eligible tourism entity and the city would work together to focus spending to really attract and, and encourage tourism stays. And they were things like trails, downtowns, large events and festivals, playground, weekly events and activities, et cetera. In terms of the MAT bylaw itself, it was attached to that agenda, but it provides a definition of accommodation that would, where the MAT would apply. So it includes hotels, motels. It would apply to municipal camp, campgrounds as well as short-term rentals. It would apply between four hours and 29 days. The MAT is recommended in the bylaw at a 4% fee. There are several exemptions provided in the bylaw. So things like the County of Gray where they're using it for short-term or emergency shelter would be exempt from paying the MAT. Boards of education, long-term care type use. The MAT would be identified on the invoice. When you stay at a hotel, you see the MAT. So if it's a hundred dollar stay, your MAT tax would be $4 and then there's HST on that. The bylaw gets into, you know, failure to remit or pay your MAT tax. What is an offense with short-term wording? And then how the bylaw would be enforced. We are, as Counselor Hamley noted, recommending a legal review and Counselor Hamley had outlined the other sort of next steps in this process and certainly will be watching in July with short-term rental licensing.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Farmer?
Thank you. Through the chair. Yeah, this has been coming for a while. I'm, I'm interested in hearing more about the relationship between the nonprofit that needs to be dedicated as managing that for the city and the city. The report proposes that the Chamber of Commerce would do that, but also notes that other communities, it sounded like had formed other, no, nope, nope. Okay. Counselor Hamley's shaking his head. So what's that, who manages this then? And how does that work? And what's our relationship between the city and that organization, whoever they are?
So I answer the first part. The first part is that we would go out to RFP looking for the not-for-profit. I'll let Pam answer the second part.
The legislation prescribes that if we don't have a destination tourism marketing group here, that we have to establish an eligible tourism entity. And the proposal is that we would issue an RFP. And I, the report did note that the Chamber of Commerce, after the public engagement session at the Bay Shore, came forward and said, hey, you know, we'd be happy to work with you on creating this nonprofit. So we will issue an RFP for that if council approves these minutes. We've been looking at the structure of other agreements between other communities in Ontario, places like Niagara on the Lake, Niagara Falls, Guelph, Barry, who do have a relationship with a nonprofit. Some of them include the Chamber of Commerce. There would be room for a municipal representative, a councillor, perhaps from community development to sit on that committee as well as a tourism operator. Most communities, from what I've read, establish a tourism plan and then they, they work to implement that plan, allocating spending to those things that are agreed to. So.
And do I, through the chair, do I understand correctly then that the operating cost for that is then also paid out of the, the proceeds of the MAT?
Yes, they are.
I would think the goal would be to have as much involvement from hoteliers, et cetera, that are involved in the business, giving, giving the feedback. Everyone down here had their hand up, I think. No? Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you through you, Chair. I spoke about my concerns at the, the committee meeting and to the same point, I just want to make sure that we do have an element of control over the 50% of money that we're handing over to whoever this nonprofit. So just to clarify, you're saying that the, the chamber would, would create another entity or they would just operate as the chamber and distribute this money on tourism? Because like, for instance, let's say as a committee member, I'm the one who has to go sit on this board now to have the element of control. I don't necessarily want to sit on the chamber board and have to sit through all of that stuff. I just, I'm interested in this portion. And is there a way that we can frame it to have an element of control separate from the actual chamber?
Through you, your worship, absolutely. And I think I've confused you by attaching the chamber letter and talking about the chamber. We will prepare an RFP. Any group who's interested in establishing a nonprofit corporation can submit a proposal to the city. What we would bring back through committee is an agreement between that nonprofit corporation and the city of Owen Sound, establishing how you would work together to do exactly those types of things. What your municipal representation would look like on that committee, the financial oversight, et cetera.
Okay. So Chamber of Commerce is a potential example, not necessarily, or not, not, not what we're talking about exactly. Scott, go ahead.
Just a quick question. This is a big step tonight in approving the, the MAT. So I guess my only question is, what was the discussion like at the committee? Was the direction unanimous from the committee members, of which it's a balance between public members providing input and councillors?
Yeah, no, I think there was great interest. I can't remember how Counselor Middleborough voted, but I won't speak for her. But yeah, other than that, it was, what was it? No, it was, it was carried with a big majority.
I'll go to Mr. Simmons.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, I believe all of, it was a majority, but all the public members voted in favor of it, if that was sort of the question of what the public members were thinking.
Counselor Dodd?
Thank you, your worship. And I think one of the important parts of why the municipal accommodation tax even got started was about that we do have limited ways to raise funds to pay for the activities within our municipality. There's very few options. Grants, taxes, fees. That's how we pay for everything in our, in this world. So this is one option and one availability where we can collect a portion of assets, a portion of revenue from tourists and apply it to make not only a better tourist destination for future tourists, but also help to alleviate some of the capital or operating expenses that we're currently paying through taxation. So I think this is a great step forward. It's one of the limited, one of the very few options the province allows us to tax. And we always talk about it. Georgian Bluffs need to give us more, Chasworth needs to give us more. We always talk about, everyone else uses our services. Here's one option the province has given us to actually apply a tax to pay for the things that we continue to say we need help and support to pay for. So I think it's a great step forward. I'm looking forward to the report in a year to see how, how it was implemented and how it went. Thanks.
Yeah. So just to review what the actual recommendation is within the minutes, your worship, it's to direct staff to have the city solicitor review the draft MAT bylaw attached to the report, subject to the recommendations of a legal review, that a municipal accommodation tax bylaw be brought forward for approval substantially in the format attached to this report, and direct staff to prepare and issue a request for proposal to identify and select the eligible tourism entity as defined by the regulation required to administer 50% of the fund that is to be spent to promote tourism in Owen Sound. And with that, your worship, I will move that set of minutes.
Good. Thank you. Any questions? Anything we haven't discussed yet? Seeing none. Call, go ahead.
Just one question on the 50% that this nonprofit organization uses or spends on, it says to promote tourism. However, they are allowed to use some of the funds for management of this nonprofit group. Is there a limit on what goes to tourism and what goes to management? Or can a maximum of it go to management?
Thank you, your worship. And through you to Counselor Kepke, the agreement that would be structured between the city and the nonprofit corporation could provide for sort of those administrative costs and what the expected upset limit would be.
Okay. Now, oh, go ahead.
And just to clarify, so we get 50% to allocate to what we want. The 50% used to promote Owen Sound, is that, is, is there clarity yet in terms of whether that's just like ads for Owen Sound in different places? Or whether that's things like this community group gets this amount because they're doing, like, the Salmon Spectacular gets that because they're putting up billboards other places anyway, like, or is it just print material and radio ads and free Owen Sound tattoos?
Many municipalities where I've read the agreement between the nonprofit and the corporation, they start with, if you can believe it, a plan. So they create a tourism marketing plan and then they agree on how they're going to implement that plan.
Okay. So that's kind of answered it. So we'll call the question on favor. So that is carried. At 13, we have no postponed matters. At 14, on our agenda, we have no motions for which notice was previously given. At 15 is a discussion of additional business. And it's Counselor Merton first. Go ahead.
Through your worship, I attended the sunrise ceremony held at Kechi Nema Wukadong Reconciliation Garden, June 21, 2023, National Indigenous Peoples' Day. It was a meaningful way to greet the dawn on this longest day of the year and to be led in this special event by our indigenous community. Our mayor, representatives from our city, Graham Bruce County staff, and our community as groups and individuals were present to see the big canoe arrive and to watch the rising of the sun as we gather together in the spirit of reconciliation. The second additional business item, it was a fabulous day for a parade in Owen Sound. And who would have thought you would see a bouncy castle in the parking lot of Owen Sound City Hall? The Third Annual Pride Parade held in Owen Sound happened on June 17, 2023, in the River District. In addition to the parade, there were booths set up around the Farmers Market Building and wonderful live music. This was a great inclusive event with lots of people and even pets participating in the parade and spectators cheering from the sidewalk. It was lots of fun with lots of conversation and a great community event. Thanks to all who contributed, contributed to the success of this event and this pride parade.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Middleborough?
Thank you. On June the 14th, I had the pleasure of representing the mayor and council at the Billy Bishop Museum plaque return ceremony. It was a great event and it is a yearly event that the Billy Bishop recognizes local veterans who have served. And we were able to hear the stories of these, you know, amazing people. And most notably, one of them was actually there that day and she was turning 100. So it was awesome to have her there in our presence and to be able to express our, you know, congratulations and, and thanks for all of the service that they have provided to this country. And the other event I wanted to speak about is on July the 5th at the Tom Thompson Art Gallery. We are having our very first Wine Wednesday from 5 until 7 p.m. and we're hoping that all of you will join us. It's free entrance. We will have a selection of beverages there that you can purchase and tours available of the art gallery. So it should be a great time. One to start and we'll see how it goes.
Good. Counselor Farmer?
Thank you. Picking up on Counselor Merton's comments about the pride parade, I want to highlight that it was such a heartwarming bubble of belonging and authenticity. And it reminded me how important it is that we provide public spaces like the market square, as well as how lucky we are for the dedication of community organizers. Because although we witnessed such a beautiful celebration, we also know that the folks setting up were subject to slurs on the streets, the derogatory posts about, sorry, derogatory posts have been spread on social media following the event. Locally, pride flags have been stolen and houses flying pride colors have in recent weeks received anonymous letters that are bigoted and hate-filled. And to that point, police are involved at, in investigating those letters. And anyone who has received such letters, requested to bring them to the police station or to contact Graham Bruce Pride if you don't feel comfortable Graham Bruce Pride if you don't feel comfortable going to the police yourself. The pride organizers will collect and submit them. And the GB Pride Organizing Committee recently concluded a post on social media by saying that right now, we need less love is love and more queer folks are in danger. There is more that we can do as a council and a community to condemn these acts of hatred and harassment targeting two-spirit LGBTQ-plus members of our community, and more that we can do to affirm that all are welcome here regardless of gender, sex, or sexuality. The community has asked for what they need, and now I think it's up to us to figure out how we meet that need, both immediately and in the medium and long term going forward. Thank you.
Good, thank you. I've got a number of matters, and I start off, you know, we've got a strategic plan that all of us have adopted around this table, a strategic plan refresh. Maybe that was before the last election, but you know, cornerstone of that is a safe city. Cornerstone of that is a welcoming community that's diverse, and we welcome everybody. And this month, June, we're recognizing both the Pride Month and the National Indigenous History Month. So we, at our community flagpole, we've raised a progressive flag last Friday, or Friday the June 9th. And then the pride parade, which has been referred to, took place in June 17th. We took part of the sunrise ceremony as mentioned at the Kichiname Wicadong Reconciliation Gardens at Kelso Beach at Nawaish Park. Today, we raised the Métis flag for the first time ever, recognizing the Métis in this community. They maybe didn't have a, well, they didn't have a treaty or treaty rights at the time, but have been in our community since the 1700s, both Southampton area along the harbor where there's a trading post, and down the shore of Owen Sound for many generations. And many of the family names that we see now continue to be from, have been here for a very long time. So we want everyone in our community to feel safe. We believe that everybody should be able to be free, to act freely, no matter their religion, no matter their race, their beliefs, their sexual orientation, background, heritage. We want them to have freedom of speech and to live without harassment of others. We're all entitled to our own opinion, but we're not entitled to harass others in the community. Each time we take a step forward, as we do, and we've taken some really big steps forward as a community in the last couple of years, we have those that will push back and try and take a step back. And little by little, they will eliminate, be eliminated. I read recently a quote from a mass shooting in New Zealand, and I'm sticking for the name of the prime minister that's just stepped down, but it was really amazing quote that talked about how we have to keep moving forward, and there will always be people that will be opposed to anything that goes on in the community, and we have to continue to stand up to those people and stand up to violence and keep moving our community forward. And I wish I'd brought the quote with me, but I didn't. It's pretty, pretty amazing and pretty meaningful if you can find it. To the next item. We've got great opportunities in Graham Bruce and hereon with the development of Canadian Isotope Industry that's led by the Canadian Nuclear Isotope Council. Production of medical isotopes at Bruce Power is growing and will continue to grow. We will be, Canada will be a future leader in medical isotope production and supplying isotopes around the world, and so many of them will come from Bruce Power and from this area. It's already started. A Deloitte, so Deloitte, the accounting firm, Future of Canada Center report entitled Catalyst: A Vision for a Thriving Canada at 2030. It was released in September 2020, and it provided a thrive forecast and a neutral forecast. In the thrive forecast, the second fastest growing industry is medical equipment and supplies manufacturing. And the third fastest is science research. In a neutral forecast, so where we're not thriving, we're just continuing, by 2030, the fastest growing industry was medical equipment, and the fifth fastest growing industry was pharmaceutical and medical manufacturing. So either way, we've got great opportunities when we look at those reports. Canadian Nuclear Isotope Council, or CNIC, vision was launched in a report on March 29th, 2023, titled "Isotopes for Hope: Canadian Leadership Needed Now More Than Ever," with the goal of asserting and expanding Canada's global leadership in the development, supply, and use of medical isotopes. We looked at that report and realized that we have great opportunities, and we've taken a step forward to reach out to other parties in the community and to look after, to look at those opportunities. So we had a meeting that, that has developed very quickly. So last Thursday, at a presentation at the Nuclear Innovation Institute, I was able to announce that in partnership with the Canadian Nuclear Isotope Coalition and the Nuclear Innovation Institute, I'm thrilled to announce a groundbreaking initiative that will propel our region forward. The city of Owen Sound is proud to lead the Southwestern Ontario Isotope Coalition, collaborative effort aimed at ensuring enhanced access to isotopes for medical diagnosis and treatments. The Southwestern Ontario Isotope Coalition will present significant economic opportunities for the region and position us as a center of research, innovation, and job creation. It will benefit our communities for health, the opportunities to provide radiation and isotope treatment in the future with some of the products that are coming right here. You know, think about the, the people that have to travel elsewhere to get treatment, and we can start to eliminate that and increase the health of our community. Our region of Bruce and Graham is poised to become a global leader in the production and research of medical isotopes, and we will be reaching out to invite the healthcare institutions, research centers, and government agencies to join us in this transformative journey. The initial co-chairs are myself, as the mayor of the city of Owen Sound, James Skonyak, who is the chair of the Canadian Nuclear Isotope Council, Bruce Wallace, who is the chair of the Nuclear Innovation Institute. And we're looking for a fourth chair and have reached out to the Saugino-Jibwee Nation to join us and, and look forward to them moving forward. We will build out a plan that will bring industry to the area focused on isotope and moving forward. It's a huge opportunity for us in the area, huge opportunity for our area, huge opportunity for Canada, and we look forward to leading and being part of it from here in the city of Owen Sound. So we're pretty excited, and there's a lot of other people last Thursday at the event that were excited. Moving on, and I mentioned before that we raised for the first time the Métis flag here at City Hall. And as part of the Indigenous History Month, it's the first time that we've recognized the rich history, heritage, resilience, and diversity of First Nations, Inuit, and Métis. The Métis of Mudtown, so I talked about the east shoreline of Owen Sound, in our region, the Métis have a rich and storied history, beginning as early as in the 1700s. Distinct Métis settlements arose along Ontario's freighting waterways and on the Great Lakes of Ontario. These settlements were part of the larger regional communities interconnected by the highly mobile lifestyle of Métis, the fur trade network, seasonal rounds, extensive kinship connections, and the shared collective history and identity. Through the 20th century, many Métis families continue to live in Mudtown, which falls within the area represented by the Great Lakes Métis Council, and remains an indivisible part of the Métis nation and frankly, of our community. The Métis communities that continue to thrive throughout our region in Ontario have deep social, cultural, spiritual, and economic connections to their traditional territories. On behalf of the city, we're proud to begin to our journey with the Great Lakes Métis and to continue our work with their council, supporting their goals and visions for the future and the raising of the Métis flag today and going forward. So recognizing again the same history that we're going through this month, I attended the official opening of the Owen Sound Galdu Court up at the courthouse, which was an amazing ceremony with regional justices, superior court justices present, members of the justice of the peace community at it. So Galdu Court, so G-A-L-D-U-E is named after an indigenous person from British Columbia that took a criminal sentencing appeal all the way to the Supreme Court of Canada. It was 1999, and there are now Galdu Courts named after that original person. So a Galdu Court is a special court for people charged with crime and who self-identify as indigenous, Métis, First Nation, or Inuit. Galdu Courts are also called indigenous peoples courts. They're sometimes referred to, or they are part of a restorative justice process. Years ago, when I was still a criminal lawyer, I was able to send in on a sentencing circle up at Nawaishingamanger, then we just called it Cape Croker, that was really amazing. And I can see where this process is going to be beneficial to an aging or an aged criminal justice system and start to restore justice in a different way that allows victims to be able to be heard by the, by the accused and vice versa. And you know, the traditional system is we order them not to talk to each other, and they don't get to understand what each other has gone through or what the relationship is, and it's, it causes a lot of problems. So a restorative justice system is something that I saw work, and I believe that it will continue to work, especially as a Galdu Court, and hopefully will someday in my lifetime span out to being more than just for indigenous people. The Galdu case is a landmark Supreme Court of Canada decision handed down in 20, in the 23rd day of April 1999, which advises that lower courts should consider an indigenous offender's background, make sentencing decisions according to, or based on Section 718 Sub 2 E of the Criminal Code. It is a Canadian court that applies Canadian laws. They often try to incorporate indigenous cultural practices and understanding of justices, and they might start with a smudging ceremony or have elders or knowledge keepers start with song or prayer. And often elders, and they're a very, very important part of the process. It is often sentencing, it's often discussion, it isn't necessarily a trial. It's often a bail hearing to try and find different ways to deal with it that you don't start with jail first. I want to congratulate Judge Morneau, who has been an important part of this and took risks early to, to allow restorative justice process and sentencing circles and try different things, and has been instrumental along with the former crown Peter Laje, who passed away recently. Unfortunately, before we got to the official opening, that he got to see it. Both of them and many others were very strong advocates and willing to try something new and move that process ahead. I think they said there's one in Walpole Island, Sarnia, and somewhere else in Ontario. So this is like the fourth one in Ontario. So it's pretty special to be recognized here in Owen Sound. And moving from that, on Sunday, I was able to attend the 2023 Bruce Graham Music Hall of Fame induction here at the Owen Sound Legion. It's the first time we've conducted this in three or four years after COVID. And then, of course, the fire that destroyed the Hepworth Shallow Lake Legion, which the building was once the Hepworth home of country music and had such a history, and it's a tragic loss to lose the Hall of Fame and the treasured artifacts and displays and things that were there. So it's nice to be back and see the Hall of Fame honoring and legendary performers in the area and in our community and beyond. And we look forward to their plans as they plan the next Hall of Fame and where it will be. So congratulations to Arnie Clark and his entire committee that put it together, thanks to the Owen Sound Legion. And you know, how many concerts have there been in the Owen Sound Legion Hall since the 1970s when it opened? So we look forward to future years. So those are my comments today. Thank you. So I think we're down to motion that the committee of the whole rise.
Thank you, worship. I will, another big event that's coming up is Canada Day. Never mind then. Move by myself that the committee of the whole rise and report.
Thank you. All in favor? And that's carried. Motion to adopt.
Thank you, worship. Move by myself and second by councillor Farmer, that the action taken in committee of the whole, considering public meetings, deputations, and presentations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports of city staff consent agenda, committee minutes, matters postponed, motions for which notice was previously given, and additional business be confirmed by this council.
Good, thank you. And all in favor? So that is carried. Are there any notices of motion being given? Seeing none. We are not going into closed session tonight, so there is no closed session, so we're down to the bylaws. So if you can read all of them, Brianna, with the exception of that last one being 82.
Through you, worship. Bylaws listed for approval on tonight's agenda include the confirmatory bylaw, a bylaw to amend the board and committee bylaw to appoint Robert Join to the operations committee, and remove David Malito from the Community Development Tourism and Culture Advisory Committee, a bylaw to execute an agreement with Mellor Waste Systems respecting non-eligible recycling pickup, a bylaw to establish fees and charges for this city of Owen Sound, and a bylaw to execute a facilities agreement with Don Bartley for the use of Tom Williams Park.
So Travis, if you can move all of the bylaws with the exception of 2023 082.
Thank you, worship. Move by myself, second by councillor Farmer, that bylaw numbers 2023 077, 078, 079, 080, and 081 be passed and enacted.
And all in favor? So that is carried. So I'll hand the microphone over to Deputy Mayor Craig.
And I will go back to the clerk to speak to that bylaw.
The last bylaw for approval is a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw respecting lands at 2125 16th Street East.
Councillor Dodd.
Thank you, your acting worship. Move by myself, second by councillor Farmer, the bylaw number 2023 082 be passed and enacted.
And all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. And we've got one thing just to mention as we go through this week into celebrating this upcoming weekend, and councillor Dodd spoke to it already. We will start off the Soundwater Fest weekend on Friday, June 30th, with Youth Day. And I should say, these are going to take place at the Owen Sound Visitor Center, the former CN rail station on the west side of the harbor, as well as at Kelso Beach at Nawaish Park through the weekend where the celebrations will continue. And I'm just going to look over to councillor Dodd just to speak to, what's the cost for individuals to take part in this great weekend within, in the city?
Well, thank you. I had to ask because sometimes you never know. It is free, and so, and we like to thank all of our sponsors for making it to be free. But also, if you do feel like you have an extra tune in your pocket, there's always a donation jar, so thank you so much.
It's a great weekend to celebrate Canada and what we offer to the world and what we cherish here within. So we hope everyone will take part. Just before I adjourn, I'm just going to go to councillor Farmer.
Looking at the promotional material, I note that, that Friday, June 30th, is Youth Day at the Owen Sound Visitor Center. Is that the same visitor center that has refreshed Owen Sound promotional hoodies and t-shirts and hats and things?
People will find out when they visit. And with that, we are adjourned and hope to see everyone at Canada Day. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
A lot of power.
Yes, a lot of power. Once you get to those thousands down there, you're going to be a little torquey on the thumb throttle.
Oh, that's the one I want.
I don't. You scare me. I'll go as high as this.
Do you want to try it out, Diane?
I do.
Yeah, hop on there, please.
I do. It is gorgeous. I love the color. Of course, every woman buys something because of the color, correct?
Now, she's an ATVer.
Yes, I heard that. Heard that rumor.
Oh, nice, all power?
What's that? Yeah, power steering across the board, yep.
Right, it's got, it's even got a horn.
Yeah, you've got your two-wheel drive, four-wheel drive option on there. You've got your winch at the front here. All of them come with winch and trailer hitch, yeah.
Yeah, what about the bucket at the back?
So that's, that's extra on top of that. But yeah, there's accessories galore on these things.
It's to carry your margaritas when you're on the trail.
There you go.
Not that we do that.
No, of course not.
Yes, and of course, Virgin Margaritas.
So Diane actually needs a new one because she crashed hers.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, I did.
Well, it looks like you've got the perfect sign for yourself there.
Well, I'm actually like, look, Sid, look what I bought. You will love it. Yeah, he's, he'll be shaking his head.
So what is the warranty?
The warranty on something like that?
So yeah, these ones here, they have a one-year factory warranty, so basically across the unit, but then a five-year power drain. So for five years, anything that's basically touching the engine will be under warranty.
And you, and you service them all here, right?
We do, yeah. We've got two technicians here that work on these, you know, day in, day out, year round. So oil changes, you know, anything to do with the engine, things along those lines, warranty work, all done right here.
Okay. And there's a payment plan that people can do about?
Yeah, we do offer financing as well, yeah.
That is amazing. I love this. I positively love it. Mine is a 570. This is a 600. That's about as high as I'll go. Because like you say, there's a lot of power.
There is.
I'd like to see what else you have.
Yeah, absolutely. So in the same CF Moto line, we also offer side-by-sides. So we've got the utility style, like you see right here.
This is like a road vehicle.
Yeah, this is a six-seater. So if you've got the whole family going out, you can take them out in this CF Moto 1000XL.
And they don't tip when you're on those really tough trails and?
Yeah, no, these, these are really great. They also have bars up here to protect you if something like that were to happen.
Get in.
You know, we had, we went to Costa Rica.
Okay, yeah.
And in the middle of nowhere, and they picked us up from this airline, or not an airline, it was an airfield.
Sure.
Little wee plane comes in, and our friends come to pick us up in one of these.
Sure, yeah.
They went through so much.
We see, we see a lot of people use these for, you know, your off-the-grid.
You okay? I just, I just got, she's getting really close. Yeah, it's fine.
Did you hit your head? Do we need to get your helmet or?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness. This is cool, though. Yeah.
This is cool.
Yeah, so we see this, this style of unit, we've sold to a lot of people that, you know, have off-the-grid, you know, hunt camps or cottages where they have to take a number of people, a number of pieces of gear that they can put in the back here, and take it all to the cabin in one go with the generator.
Wow. And then you have the smaller one, which is a, what, three-seater?
Yeah, so this one here is a, up to a three-seater. So they have different styles for, there's the bench seat here, it's specific for two people, but they do have an option in an 800 model that has bucket seats as well. So there's different, you know, options within this line that you can work with.
And they all tow?
Yes, all of them tow. And this style, the U-Force, has, all have the dump boxes here.
Okay.
We do have a sport model out front that I'll show you as well, that is, you know, no dump box, a little bit more narrow for the trails.
Sorry. This would be fun to have.
I would love one of those.
Yeah.
But because of all the trails we go on, I'm always a little leery about, because we have tipped.
Oh.
Even with the, you know?
If you can tip it, she'll do it.
I'll do it, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
But I love that you can just take the, I've seen a lot of them on the trails.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it just amazes me.
Yeah, well, that's the great thing about our area, too, is there's trails all over the place, up the Bruce Peninsula.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, wow. And of course, you've got outboard motors.
Yeah, so like, this is, this is kind of the, you know, the original Yamaha product for us, you know, lots of people coming in about the outboard motors. Wide range, I mean, on our lot right now, we've got anywhere from a 2.5 model to, you know, a 200 horsepower. So there's a wide range there. And for the most part, it's typically quoting out to customers, and then we get it from the factory, but we do have some loose outboard models here as well.
Wow. That's amazing.
I'll tell you later about a funny story with my husband Creighton. He lost his off the boat.
Did he?
Yeah.
I've, I've seen it before. I, I cottage on a lake over towards Halliburton, and there was a guy jumping the waves and right off the back. So we're here to service that or get you a new one.
So let's go out and see the big boats.
Yeah. It's a little noisy out here.
Yeah, right here in the heart of the Sunset Strip, in the car dealerships, yeah.
Yeah, it's all good.
Little noisy, but lots of traffic, which is good for business.
Yeah, absolutely. So do you want to take us for a little tour out here?
Yeah, for sure. So outside here, we've got the bigger toys, the boats. We've got the Smoker Craft line of fishing boats, which has been very popular. As you can see, kind of from the internal side here, this is a welded boat. It's a 17-foot Osprey.
Heavy?
Not super heavy, easy to tow, but what the nice thing about this is, is it's got dry storage, you've got your live wells, you've got your ability to have the full top here, which closes off as well. It's called the fisherman's top.
Okay.
So people can go out in any weather, basically. It's just a very, you know, common style of fishing boat, especially here on some of the bigger water in Georgian Bay.
So are seats optional?
Yeah, so basically, these ones come with two, with the option to put in two more pedestals.
Oh, okay.
A lot of people use this area here, especially the anglers, for their downriggers, casting platforms, so you don't want to take up too much space in the boat if it's just a couple of people going out.
So build to specifications?
For sure.
Right, okay.
Absolutely. So this is one of the smaller fishing boat models we have, actually. This one right here is actually an 18-foot.
Oh.
And it's a deep hull. So again, good for Georgian Bay, cutting right through the water. And then this actually goes up to a 20-foot model, and then a 20-foot model plus an extension of about four feet on the back, so lots of space for these, these anglers that are going out in the chop.
Can you sleep in any of those?
Not in any of these, no. There's no cabins in these. I mean, I guess it's been a long day, you could sleep on the floor, but there's no cabin specific to that.
I just wondered, because it's quite deep in the bow.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Wow.
It's good for Georgian Bay.
Absolutely, you need that.
And then on the other side of things, something that's been popular for us is our pontoons. So we carry the Sylvan Line, we carry the Bennington Line, and we carry the Legend Line. And these have been a lot more popular on some of the inland lakes in the area. We've got, you know, around 100 inland lakes that, you know, more cottagers are coming up to, and these seem to be the boats that are popular on that side of things.
Some of them apparently even have change rooms.
Yes.
And washrooms onboard.
Absolutely. So yeah, a lot of these have a little compartment that if you pull it up, a little change room will pop down, and some people do have porta-potties onboard in those little change rooms.
Yeah, yeah. This is gorgeous. This, this is my dream, my bucket list, isn't it? Oh, I want one so badly because at our cottage, we overlook water, we're not on water, so there are some big lakes around where we are.
Sure.
So you could just have them at a marina, and you could tour, you get on it, can tour about five lakes at one time.
Yep.
If you want.
Absolutely.
But this is my dream.
Well, I mean, the nice thing about the pontoon side of things is, yes, you can fish off of it.
Yes.
You can take, you know, up to 12 people out on it, but it's basically, if you have a dock, it's an extension of the dock.
That's right.
I mean, at our cottage, we have a pontoon. I eat breakfast down there. I play bingo on the radio down there. It's just somewhere to sit in the sun.
You play bingo?
Radio bingo, absolutely.
Good for you. Good for you.
You don't look very old.
No, that is a beautiful boat.
Yeah.
Like, you've got everything from fishing boats right through to luxury, you know, pontoons, and even just cruise boats.
Absolutely, yeah. Wide, wide range for, you know, any type of boater out there.
Right.
What's this green and black one?
So this is a Legend. It's more of a fishing style as well, but a lot of the boats these days are coming in what they call a fish and play model. So you've got the ability to have a fishing boat, but then it also comes with, you know, a tow bar.
So you can water ski.
You can water ski, do tubing, and take the whole family out.
Nice, yeah. But there has to be a certain size of engine for that sort of thing as well, right?
Yeah, so these ones go up to about 150, but typically, you know, Legend gives you the option to go anywhere from 60 up.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah.
So if anyone wants to come and have a look, you're on social media?
Yeah, we're online on social media. All of our inventory is on our website. And then in terms of, you know, if you just want to give us a shout, our phone number's 519-372-2211. We've got a good sales staff here, happy to chat with you.
I just have to convince my husband that you can come.
Well, he's got to come in and pick up the ATV.
Well, now you've done the scouting report, and you can report back.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, thank you so much for having us, Adam.
Thanks for coming by.
This was so much fun.
You bet.
Like I said, it's my happy place.
Yeah, and anytime you want to come back and just lounge in the sun, feel free.
Okay. Take, can I take it for a spin?
Yeah, well, that might be a bit tough.
Yeah, around here.
We'll just go up here on Saturday afternoon and have a cocktail or something.
Okay, sounds good. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks again.
This program is brought to you by Ignite TV. Now you're in command. Visit Rogers.com for more details.
Welcome to the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Stalo people. The Stalo are people of the river. I'm so thankful for the courage and resiliency of our ancestors who lived on this land since time immemorial. Each of us have gifts from the Creator, and our Creator has a plan and purpose to be fulfilled in our territory. As we embrace our traditional teachings, we can lead the next generation into the fullness of what our Creator designed. Our shared history reveals a broken relationship, but as all Canadians commit to hear truth, acknowledge injustice, we can learn to walk in our traditional way, Lethamot, with a good heart and a good mind. Then all of our lives will be enriched. Quasai.
Lovely viewers, it's your host of On the Couch, Antoine Elhasim, reminding you to tune in for every episode of season nine of the longest-running and most-loved local queer talk show on Rogers TV.
Welcome back. Here we are.
We are here at Jasmine's and with Pam. I am so happy, finally.
Yes, it's been a long time to set this up, but I'm glad we're here. And it's the last show, right? Is it your last show?
Second last show, actually, yes. Yes, it is for the summer. So we saved the best for last.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we did. This is amazing. We have sangrias, it's Pam's own recipe, isn't it?
Yes, it's Pamgria, they've nicknamed it Pamgria.
Yes.
But we can't find out the recipe because she'd have to kill us if.
So kill me.
I'll do it on your next show.
Okay.
She's doing a good job of it, right?
Yeah, she is.
I'll show you how to make it.
Yes. Thank you for having us.
Oh, anytime.
All right, well, so you've got someone back in the kitchen mixing up lots of yummy stuff. What have we got here?
Today, Dixie's in the kitchen, and she also makes the best cheesecake ever.
New York cheesecake or the actual cream cheese and the?
The cream cheese one. And she puts booze in everything.
What?
Today it is butterscotch Toblerone, butterscotch schnapps Toblerone cheesecake.
Oh, my gosh. Calorie-free, I'm sure.
Guilt-free, yeah. Especially if you share, because we put fruit on it.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Can I take it home?
Sure you can.
Wow, that sounds really good. What I like about Jasmine is that a lot of your recipes are unique. Like, you just can't go to a roadhouse and get the specialty of the coconut shrimp with her special recipes and her wings, and this looks amazing.
The pad thai is really good, really popular, too. It's done with like a satay sauce, and it's rice noodles, so it's gluten-free, lots of vegetables and chicken, or you could have shrimp. We could do it without, so it's vegetarian.
Yeah. We come here before we go to the Roxy, the first production of the new, whatever it is, and you, there's about 20 of us plus, and it is amazing because we just look on the blackboard, and the menu you have on the blackboard is so unique and interesting, it's hard to pick. And it's from chicken to beef to fish.
Yeah.
Is basically what's on there, the selections. And it's hard, and it's out fast and so good. I know the salmon is really good. Yeah. For sure.
I love the salmon here. I could eat it every day. Yeah.
But it's unique, what you do with it.
Jamison is an amazing cook.
Really?
Yeah.
So how many chefs do you have?
So there's three.
Okay.
Dixie's my day girl, and then I have Tim and Jamison at night, and they create new specials every night.
Wow. And you're open five, six Sundays a week?
Close Sundays, but yeah.
Yeah, I hear you. That's a lot.
That's my sleep date.
Yes. Well, you need your beauty sleep. Well, you don't need your beauty sleep.
No, she doesn't.
No. Please make me look.
I can put your eyelashes on.
Okay, okay.
Oh, yes, I've had that done.
Have you? Well, no, you always look so pretty, doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Whenever we come. What I like is it's so welcoming here. Oh, it is. She knows everybody's name when you walk in, like, and what you drink.
At least your drinks. Sometimes you go, oh, you mean?
Rhine Coke?
Yeah. Yeah, lots of ice.
So it's not just a restaurant. It has everything. It, there's a nice little bar area, we've been here a few times. Yeah, and the music is fabulous. Entertainment is so good. Like, I noticed you had a calendar of your entertainment coming up.
So Wednesday night is our open mic night, and so many people have kind of started here, yeah. Like, I remember Rob Elder and Joel Morelli were playing here, and I think Rob was 18. I don't think he was old enough to drink. And Joel was late, and I'm like, up you go, and he goes, I'm a drummer. And I'm like, I've seen you play guitar, you can do it. And look at him now, right?
Wow.
Sam Martin, she used to host my jams so long ago, and like, now she's a Juno Award winner.[1775.66]
That's amazing.
And well with pride.
Yes, for sure, for sure.
And then of course you have Pete Devlin every week, pretty much, and I have Larry Jensen, who's like...
Larry plays here too.
He does.
Nice.
I heard he's coming here for her anniversary.
No, that's Larry Dickinson. Larry and Steve Dickinson.
And obviously they're brothers.
They are.
And wow, we have to come. Are we invited? We are now, yeah.
Jasmine's turned 23, May 29th. We opened May 29, 2000. And yeah, I never got to celebrate my anniversary then, but I figure with names like Larry and Steve, we'll do it then. It'll be a good party on the patio.
23 is amazing.
Yeah.
Right? It really is amazing.
A lot of hard work, Pam.
And you opened it? You're the original Jasmine's.
Yep.
Well, I had a partner my first year, but you know.
She's been here pretty much every day.
I've seen her. We, when we're here, it's never the same day. So you're here.
I'm here a lot. And then your days consist of like your shopping and your liquor order. And in the summer, I like to go to Katy and get like nice, fresh local produce.
On the Tuesdays?
On the Tuesdays, yeah.
Wow. Where did you get the name Jasmine's?
It was kind of, oh my God, we have to file for our liquor license and our business license and you have to come up with a name. And it was like, we wanted to do music, so it was like Jazzy Blue, Jazzy Pink. And then I'm like, oh, we'll just do Jasmine's and with the Z's.
Which is up there. There it is there.
And the Y, because I kind of have swirly writing, so.
Well, it's very unique. You know how it's amazing how you identify logos? And that would be one of the ones that you know right away.
Yeah.
Jasmine's logo, the restaurant.
Well, my husband really wanted to call it Jake's Sports Bar, but I was opposed to that.
Since Jake was only eight at the time.
And too little for a bar, but he could do sports, right?
No, I love it. It's a great, great place. And you always know someone when you walk in.
Yeah, you just feel very comfortable.
Yeah.
And did you just start off with this section? Because I know you've got a whole new section at the patio.
So it used to be Green's Deli a long time ago.
Oh, I remember that.
So I got it in the January and then it took me that long to kind of paint and build the bar and build a walk-in and all that stuff. And yeah, but no, both sections. So this was more like the bar side and then there's the dining room side.
Okay.
And then after the first year, I'm like, I'm going to build a patio. And they're like, you can't do that. And I'm like, you should watch me because I'm going to do that.
Oh, it's the best patio in town.
I can't wait to say it. You know what? I've never seen it. I've always been in here.
Oh, honey.
I know. I guess I must come in bad weather. I'm not sure.
She's a fair weather. No, a bad weather, you're right.
A bad weather person.
But it's so nice because you can, you can sit out there, have a nice dinner, listen to some music and a lot of, I mean, what do you do when you're older or younger? Like there's, it's a destination. So you get dinner and entertainment all in the same night.
This is a hidden gem because we are on a busy street. It's Ninth Avenue, Ninth Street.
Ninth Street.
You know, downtown, and you wouldn't even know that all that hustle and bustle was out there because as soon as you walk in here, it's like...
Oh, yeah. And wait till you see the patio. It is an oasis. It really is. It's like, you know.
Yeah, my very first year, I planted Boston Ivy. And then I met this really nice man and his wife and they had a little vineyard out in Katy, no, Bogner. And he's like, I have a lake, like a little, like lake trout farm and a vineyard. And he said, come on out, bring your son out. So we went fishing and he gave me a little clipping of the vine. And I planted it and now there's...
Is that the original vine?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
Is it flower?
No, it produces grapes.
We should make wine.
Grapes don't have flower?
I've tried. Yeah, it's not fabulous. So I only like to do things I'm really good at. I'm not good at making wine. But if anybody would like my grapes, you're welcome to have them.
The challenge is on, Lois.
Right, yeah. No, I have lots of grapevine and we're always trying to tear it down because it's just crazy, yeah.
These are Baco Noir, so they are a vineyard quality, yeah. It's just kind of, kind of neat.
That's cool.
It is neat.
And I also want to mention to you, Diane, I don't know if you know this or not, but we had our DC Taylor Christmas party here last fall. Amazing.
Wow, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Yep, she shut down the section. And the food was, we had a choice of three different entrees, I think.
Yeah.
Everyone raved about the food. It was so good.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's kind of nice because it's a private little space and then also you don't have to pay for entertainment because it's already set up for you.
Oh, yeah, we all like moved in here and took over and...
You know, that's good to know because I'm sure there's a lot of small businesses out there that are thinking, I don't want to rent the big venues.
Right.
So to actually come here where it's so personal, personable and homey, they can do that.
Oh, yeah, we had appies.
Wow.
So good.
That's good to know. For family gatherings, it's another thing.
Yeah, and you get a lot of reservations for the Roxy, right?
I do, yeah. Prior to the show, yeah.
So you would recommend reservations?
Yes.
Yes, okay. What's the best way to do that? By phone or...
Just phone.
Yeah, okay.
Just phone.
Okay, awesome. Do you think we have time to go and check the patio out?
Oh, most definitely. You need to see the patio.
Okay, awesome.
This is so good.
Well, you're hungry.
I'm trying, no, it is good. I'm trying the coconut shrimp. And the shrimp is big.
That's huge. I thought it was a salmon patty or something.
No, it's coconut shrimp and it is so good. I love shrimp and coconut. This is amazing.
My husband and I were on our honeymoon in Barbados and we had these like giant prawn, coconut prawns. And I'm like, somebody needs to make these for me. And they did.
Somebody is.
Brought it back.
So good.
Awesome. Okay, well, we'll finish up here and then we'll go out to the patio. I absolutely love it out here.
It's pretty, isn't it?
It is very pretty.
Very lush. You would never know it was tucked away in downtown Old Town.
No, you would not.
I have to ask you, where did the chute go? Like the, that's the original?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, so it's like climbed everywhere.
Yeah.
And so people know that's grapevines.
The Baco Noir grapes.
Baco Noir.
Baco Noir.
Which means great white.
No, it's red.
I know.
And then we set the music up just right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a little bar over there and then there's a little gas fireplace that you can, we light up and keeps you...
How pretty.
Keeps you warm.
It's awesome. We'll come here this summer. You won't believe the crowd that gets out here, Diane.
So you like the fireplace?
Yeah, just over there, the little Jasmine fireplace.
Oh, right. Oh, nice. So pretty with all the greenery.
Yes.
It really is. I love it. And people can come from the back if they want?
Yeah, there's a parking lot back there.
Excellent, all right.
Really nice. This is great. And it's raining. But we're still out here.
Yes, well, we're not even getting rained on because of all the grapevines.
That's because I'm under your hat.
That's maybe why I'm not getting rained on either. All right, well, let's go inside and...
Enjoy, thank you.
Thank you so much, Pam.
This is wonderful.
Cheers.
Thank you. We'll see you soon.
For sure.
Call the Rogers TV viewer response line, email us, or connect with us on social media.
This summer, get ready to fall in love.
We've seen hookups, breakups, and everything in between.
The hottest shows.
I'm here to find my husband.
I can have my happily ever after.
Are on City TV.
Name something.
Marijuana.
Marijuana.
You are each related to a celebrity. You must uncover everyone else's identity.
Yes, I will do your prayer.
I didn't expect to have so much fun.
It's all new, all summer long, on City TV.
That was hot.
Hey, Gray County, think it's too late to become more fit? Think again. I'm personal trainer Karen Ross, specializing in 55-plus fitness. My mission is to help...